Good afternoon, welcome to the May 7th, 2024 session of Glen's Falls Planning Board. We have an agenda with several items on it this evening. We are waiting for one member who's stuck in traffic, but we'll go through some of our administrative items before Tom gets here. The first item on our agenda is the review and potential approval of the minutes from the, we'll start with the March 5th Planning Board meeting. Is there anybody that has anything? We'll start with Art.
No.
Anything?
No.
No.
I believe that one we were all good with, uh, for the March 5th. So I've made a motion that we accept the minutes for the March 5th meeting as submitted. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to the April 2nd Planning Board meeting minutes. This was, um, the first meeting for the month of April. Um, Nina, anything? Keith, anything?
Yeah, page seven, uh, says two zero zero three. I think it's supposed to be two zero zero five.
Yep, got you. Two oh three, yep. Is that it? For you?
Yeah, thank you.
Anything?
No.
Rich?
No.
All right. Tom, anything for the, uh, April 2nd?
Nope.
Minutes?
All set.
Okay. Uh, then I made a motion to accept the meeting minutes for April 2nd as amended. Can I get a second for that?
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, the next set of meeting minutes that we have to go through are the special meeting minutes for April 16th. Um, that was the special meeting for the Hoffman Project. I'll start with Tom. Anything for you on that one?
No.
Anything for Art? Anything? The only thing I had on that one was on page four, the resolution number 19. It says on the motion of Commissioner Murray, seconded by Commissioner Cullen, all voting affirmatively. Uh, that was not an all affirmative vote. There was one, one dissenting vote. So we just wanted to, I think that should be stripped. That was in the resolution? Yes, we had, there was one, one dissenting vote, so it wasn't really all voting. And I, and I understand that is noted.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Kim, anything for you?
No.
Keith?
I'm all set.
Uh, then I made a motion that we accept the minutes for the April 16th Planning Board meeting as amended. Can I get a second on that?
Second?
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Gentlemen of the administration, stop up. Thank you. Um, our first item on our agenda is old business. Uh, it's shown as sketch plan review, but I believe we are actually in site plan review at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Um, well, they appeared before?
They did. They appeared before as before for sketch plan, but I think that this is now site plan. This is Clute Enterprises Incorporated, owner of tax map number three oh nine point one six dash four dash ten point two, commonly known as thirty-four to forty Arlington Street. Seeking approval of subdivision to build three single-family homes to be created off of Overlook Drive pursuant to City of Glen's Falls Code, Chapter one ninety-two dash five, Section E. This request would need permission from the Comming Council regarding Paper Street before the applicants can move forward. Is there anybody here representing that application?
It's also an application for subdivision.
Right. I don't see anybody here. I'm going to at least table this until there's somebody here to represent the action. Okay, we, we got, no, we got new stuff submitted.
All right.
I, I think it was new. It, I mean, it doesn't look a lot different than what we looked at during sketch plan, but I mean, this is the actual application. So, um, I will table that temporarily until there's somebody here who will address it again at the end of the meeting. Uh, then we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is site plan review twenty-four dash zero 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 four, two oh nine Maple LLC, frankly, owner of tax map number three zero, uh, three zero three point one seven dash two two dash two, commonly known as two oh seven Maple Street. Pursuant to the City of Glen's Falls Code, Chapter two twenty dash twenty-seven, Section thirteen and subsection D. Whereas the planning board is rehearing the approved site plan, the applicant is seeking planning board review and approval of shared commercial space for offices, auto repair with parking area, and salt bin storage, not for retail sales. Is there anybody here for this application? Mr. Leo. If you could state your names for the record.
Uh, Frank Leo.
Scott. I know that you were here for the last meeting when we were initially talking about this. Is there anything updated, anything different you want to add to the application that you submitted or do you want to kind of go through it a little bit?
It's kind of true, you know, we have a parking plan.
Speaking right into the microphone.
We have a parking plan now that, that you have a copy of.
Yep.
Other than that.
Okay. Um, we'll go through this a, a little bit. We are going to ask for public comment on it. Um, I think that what we'll do, um, since we've got your plan, we'll seek public comment first, then the board will kind of review it. So is there anybody here, uh, from the public who wishes to speak on this application? I see no hands. Um, we did get one letter that was written from an adjoining property owner, which they've asked me to read into the record. Um, so I will, it's a four-page letter, so bear with me. I'm not going to read all four pages, um, but I will read the, the initial portion of this. This is from Ken Pagels. Uh, I own two oh three Maple Street, I've owned two oh three Maple Street since the mid nineteen eighties, next door to where North Country Snow and Ice now operates. I am pro-business for the area and recognize that I purchased the property in, in an area, zone like industrial. What I did not anticipate was a company working overnight shifts with loud heavy equipment among residential housing. The equipment operates within thirty feet of bedroom windows for hours on end, approximately fifty percent of the winter months. Based on item one, based on item three, in the City of Glen's Falls purpose and intent for light industrial districts, I would hope that was not the planning board's intent when the app, when operation hours were granted. This amount of overnight disturbance certainly diminishes the quality of life of the nearby residents. Based on the meeting minutes from 2014, it seemed the planning board was unaware, as Mr. Leo stated in those minutes, that they would only work at night during a good snowstorm to basically start their trucks and leave the property. Mr. Leo's comments sounded accommodating, but not really how they have operated. I have not had access to the two thousand nine application, so I am unaware if North Country Snow and Ice expressed the same amount of onsite overnight work they would require. During December of 2021, based on the recommendation of one of one city councilmen at the time, the tenants started reporting noise disturbances to the police. I kept track of the, of a brief seventeen-day sample. Eleven of the seventeen nights, they had overnight workers with very little precipitation during that time. Uh, I passed this information on to city representatives. The information is provided below this, three pages that I'll leave in the record of another group of seventeen males, oh, twenty-one days ago. Uh, the noise ordinance at that time only addressed garbage trucks as a noise-producing vehicle. The tenants were told the noise created was not enforceable as a disturbance adding to their frustrations. To verify for themselves, city representatives did their own sample and found that twenty of the thirty nights, an overnight crew was operating heavy equipment. The noise ordinance has been revised, has been recently revised. I'm not sure how this affects the operations of North Country Snow and Ice overnight operations. As the neighboring property owner, I cannot stress enough how the extensive overnight operations negatively affect the residents at two oh three Maple Street. I am asking the planning board to take this into consideration when rehearing this site plan. The salt and sand bin has been the source of the nighttime disturbances, and as I understand it, this is one of the operations they hope to keep at two oh seven Maple Street. If the overnight operations are granted, I am asking if a suitable buffer will be required. Sti- I am asking if a suitable buffer will be required stipulation to the North Country Snow and Ice and new compliance with the new noise ordinance. Uh, that is Ken Pagel, and he provides four pages, four, four ongoing pages of exhibits of dates when stuff was going on. Um, so that's pretty much what this letter states. Um, I will start our review with our architectural consultant. He's all business.
Sure. Um, this is the parking plan, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'm actually going to start the jump around in the comments. Do you know a proposed new canopy there?
I got the, uh, building permit for it to have canopy ready.
Okay. Um, I guess, do you have an image or a picture of that? Typically, we would have, um, wanted to see what that looks like in terms of architectural review.
It shows a canopy. It's just a, a flat roof with a post.
Okay. Is that something that you'd be able, since you said you have a permit for it, is that something that you could just submit to us?
Is that already built? Right?
It's started, you know, it, you know, it's not built yet.
It's not, not completed, okay.
Okay. And, and again, from, just in terms of, of the protocol, I think, you know, that needs to be part of the record as a new, as an addition.
Well, I think that was, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the building permit was already issued for that portion of the project. And I think that was, that-
That was previous.
That was previous to this application. I know, I, that was a question that I had. It says proposed new canopy, but I remember that had already been permitted.
Right.
And, and the work had started, I didn't know.
But it's not built yet.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was finished.
Okay, so that's, that's not something that still needs approval. Okay. Um, with the understanding that this is a light industrial district and fully knowing that the residence, the residences on that street are also within that same district. Um, there is a section of the code that says the intent of the district is to permit such uses to continue the light industrial district and to expand as long as they do not create problems to such an extent as to significantly diminish the quality of life of the adjoining residential neighborhoods or affect the efficient operation of other commercial and industrial uses in the district. So I think that's kind of what everybody's been talking about.
Well, we have to use it-
Sure.
Before the storm, you know, to-
Right, so I guess-
Salt and-
Right, so I guess part, part of the conversation is maybe what we might be able to maybe mitigate.
Well, I propose parking in different places, uh, whatever, you know, depending what they want me to do.
Right.
I depart to the left-hand side of, of the salt bin. This way the loader will be going this way, but the backup along would be facing the house. I could put it on the other side, turn the loader around the other way, whether you could have headlights. Or, or I can put it out, you know, in the street, you know, like we're doing now, and you just get a little bit of headlights and a little bit of, you know, uh, uh, backup alongs.
Right. Um, well, you're, you have a fence proposed, which I think is a very good thing, and you didn't describe it, but a six-foot privacy fence, is that what you had in mind?
Yeah. A stockade fence, yeah.
Right. A stockade, so chain link fence or?
No, stockade.
Yeah, 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 right.
Wood or vinyl?
Wood.
Okay. Um, and then it stops at the salt shed.
I moved the, uh, the, the, the dumpster and the porta john to the other side.
Yep.
Back a little bit, so. See if that helps?
Yes, I'm, yeah, I think it does. So with the understanding that a lot of this is existing, um, the, the zoning regulations call for a setback, and whether it applies to the salt shed or not.
It's existing, and there was a variance that was approved the first time they came in. Cause that, that was here years ago, twenty oh seven, I think.
Something like that.
Or maybe it was one time when it was redone, and, and that, there was a variance that was granted at that time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my question was to, to your point, is there anything that we can do on site to sort of mitigate the backup and noise?
Well, that's what I said. I could pull over that way, the other way, or that way?
I mean, I think the fence is a good idea. Um, you know, the zoning approves automobile, automobile-related businesses within light industrial, which is what you're proposing. Um, I think just in general, um, a cleanup of the site, which it seems to be your thinking about that, removing the porta potty and dumpster and all of this. These are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I will start with Mr. Lamb here.
Uh, I guess, uh, from my understanding of it, reading through everything, um, the, uh, salt shed, I guess, is, is non-conforming. What I, what I read out of that?
Well, they had, they had approval for the salt shed. It was part of their original approval. They had a zoning, there was a zoning variance that was granted when I originally put in, and that's all-
There might have been older information that I had there.
Okay.
So pre-existing and-
Gotcha.
Was, I'm sorry, was the approval for that location where it is right now?
Okay, it was the original approval for the site. And I think that was either two thousand seven or two thousand nine. I don't know, it was a while ago.
That, that was the only question I had basically at that point.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, the addition of the fence should help in the moving of the porta potties as you've done, seems to be it.
Well, the porta potty, you know, is gone right now. Cause I don't need it, you know, in the summertime.
Don't need it in the summertime.
It can come back, you know, in the fall.
Right, right. But the moving of those should help the neighbors, though. So those are the two things that-
I hope so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I agree. I think that that's going along to help.
Um, I don't know, it's tough for you guys running the business, some way to mitigate being there that much in the middle of the night. And it's supposed to be an emergency thing. I understand that you have to maintain the contract, but it's still be about being there pursuit of finding an happy ground, though. Um, I don't know how that's enforced. Um, it's, it's a tough thing. It is residential, but it isn't, you know, light industrial, so there's two sizes.
Uh, we changed the back of the lungs, it's a lower back of the lungs.
It is permitted, so you guys have to learn about that.
Better? Tom?
Um, you mentioned too, you said, well, this is not for retail. Does that mean the salt shed is not for retail? Does that mean it's less likely to be used at the middle of the night?
No.
Okay. All right.
What does that mean then? It's not for retail?
It's not for retail, meaning, being, uh, we're not selling, uh, to the public.
To the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So who's using it?
North Country.
Okay. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out your application, and I'm a non-loading number, but I just, so it says auto shop. Who is the auto shop? What's the name of the business?
Overtime Auto.
Overtime Auto. And then it says office space.
That's where North Country is right now.
North Country. But they don't own the salt bin, right?
They already own the salt bin.
Who owns the salt bin? You do.
Me, you know, cause I own the property.
Okay. So you are going to be selling it. You're not-
I'm not gonna be-
Snow and Ice, right?
I'm not gonna be selling to the public. The only one that's, if they use the salt bin in, uh, the North Country.
But you don't own North Country. Do you own North Country's Snow and Ice removal?
No.
No. So you are going to be selling salt to another business, North Country Snow and Ice removal.
They provide their own salt, and they use their salt.
They're the tenant of the office space and the-
The salt shed.
Salt shed.
They're, they're the tenant of-
So you're the only one that uses the salt storage bin?
Yes, currently.
Last time you were presented, you talked about potentially moving over to another-
We are, we are moving our offices to four fifteen Big Bay.
And is that, will that approve the salt shed or no?
I am working with Queensbury and putting another bin up over there.
And if that gets approval, would you then stop renting spaces?
Well, that would be up to him as what he's gonna do with the-
North Country, uh, doesn't use it anymore. I still want to keep that salt bin, cause I got the same type of business. I have another salt bin down on Warren Street, you know, in town of Queensbury, no, that I use now, but-
Same type of business of, of plow?
Snow and Ice.
Yep.
Okay. So if you weren't selling the salt to North Country, you would be using it for your own- But you're not selling to North Country. You're saying that they, when they, they're a tenant in the office space and release the salt bin.
Right.
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Then if they move out, it's my salt bin, so if I want to load salt out of there for my own business.
Right, but you're not going to sell it to anybody else.
No.
Okay, so I, are you all set?
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to step into it.
No, no.
Okay, so I, I want to kind of wrap this up and try and go along with it. Um, so there's two operations that operate out of there. Overtime Auto and currently North Country Snow and Ice. Once you are gone, then you're going to continue to use it for your purposes, but it's going to be the same use.
Right.
That's correct. Okay.
Office space.
Office space and-
For the office space, I'll find another, uh, tenant for the, for the office space.
Okay. Be it the, be it the, the auto auto shop, or if it's something else. If it's something else, then you have to have another application here for whatever that becomes. Um, so you're talking about putting up a six-foot fence. I, I think that we gotta, I think that's a great idea. Good for the separation between the tenant next door and where you are. Um, I think that we've got to check, when you fill out the application for that, Frank, you got to check the code, because I don't think that the six-foot fence can go all the way to the property. I think when you, I think it's ten feet back, that, that fence can only be, I think it's either three or four feet high. So just double-check that, I just want you to be aware of it.
I'm okay with it.
To the local team?
Right.
The six-foot can't be right on the wall.
Right, it can't, it's obstructing, it has to step down, or you have to come back ten feet, and then you can start the six-foot.
I was under the impression of, you know, correcting you, you know, if I'm wrong, I thought you could use a six-foot fence as far as your home goes, and then it had to drop down.
I, yeah, there is, there is a certain dimension back, and that's, that's in the code, and I just haven't looked at it a lot.
No, cause where that, uh, house ends-
Yep.
To sidewalk is probably ten fifteen feet.
Yeah. Right, okay. Um, there, there are some Jersey barriers, there were some Jersey barriers that were on the, that were separating out where Scott's stuff was and where the, are those gonna stay?
Yeah.
There's, and that's the line that you guys indicated, coming down, coming straight down, coming straight down a lot. You've got a, a line that comes down through here. That's the Jersey barrier?
Yep.
Okay, and those are gonna stay?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's your delineation. Um, as we said, as we talked about the canopy, you've got, that's, you've got the building permit for that, and it's already started. Um, there was a fuel tank there for a while. Is that still there or is that gone?
It's gone.
That's gone, okay. Um, no new lighting? All lighting that you're, that you've got there currently is gonna stay. You're not adding any additional lighting?
Not outside. I might, I might put a light, a couple lights under the canopy.
Under the canopy, that, that was part of the approval for that portion of it, but there's no other external lighting or anything. Okay, and we relocated the dumpster and relocated the, uh, the temporary facility. Um, the question that I would have, knowing that, that Scott's trying to get his operation moved over to Big Bay, um, is it possible? Because you do have the other salt storage down on Warren Street, that you limit the use of this to say nine o'clock at night? I mean, you would have to know if your loading vehicles at night-
I would say yes, as long as I have salt and stuff-
Yep.
In the other one over there.
So if-
But if I run out of salt that I have in that bin, obviously I can't stop at nine o'clock.
Correct, and I, I understand that, and I was gonna caveat that by saying, you know, I understand, snow, you know, stuff melts dirt a day, if you gotta get it out and sand it and salt it in there. But you would certainly know that that's gonna happen ahead of time, where you could potentially get everything loaded by, say, nine o'clock.
Well, it's not just one load.
I, no, I understand that. I get it.
And this is kind of weather determined?
Yep.
Because when you load, preload spreaders ahead of time, any metal components inside, the salt has a lot of moisture, and if it's cold, it might freeze.
Yep, I get it. Um, so I mean, if, you know, during a declared snow emergency, I think that that, I think all bets are off, you know, when that, when it's, when it is heavily snowing and all that's happening. But otherwise, you would know ahead of time, and if it, you know, if it looked like you could do most of your loading on Warren Street, where you're not near residential and, you know, look at, limiting yourself to nine o'clock on most, most nights. I think that would solve a lot of this problem, you know? So I'm, I'm hopeful that-
But I just don't want it, you know, you know, you know, that something happens and I have to load salt at, you know, eleven thirty at night.
We're saying except for-
Except for, except, except for what is a declared snow emergency.
So limit the use of the salt storage bin until nine P M.
After North Country moves out.
Correct. Um, does anybody have anything else?
What are the hours of operations for the overtime auto?
Probably seven in the morning to, uh, six at night.
Okay. And the vehicles that are there are only the ones that are being worked on by overtime auto? They're not, you're not using that as a in-town yard or anything like that?
No.
All right. Everybody go to the real rap?
Um, that's why there's so many parking spots, right? It's for cars, not for the trucks?
Well, he does a lot of work for, uh-
Enterprise.
Enterprise. And sometimes you just load them up cars, and sometimes they don't, you know, if you go there an hour, there's probably ten cars in the whole yard, but there's times that there's thirty, thirty-five cars in there.
But it's for the cars, not for the trucks, to lay, to stay there?
Yeah, we don't store any equipment.
Yeah.
You're not storing equipment? And for your other business, you're, the one on Warren Street, you don't use this property for-
Storage material, no.
Okay, sorry.
So there's no storage of the equipment? Have you equipped that?
Other than the loader?
Yeah, the only thing I have there now is a skid steer to load it.
Right.
Small loader.
Right. The big loader's not there?
No, everything's up on Big Bay.
Not a whole big use for, for salt.
Yeah.
Um, the other, one of the other items that you come up with was, was, you know, leaching of salt into the ground. I know there's two catch basins out there that was part of the original, those catch basins are piped into the city. Um, the city of Stormwater, is that correct?
No.
No.
They're, they're dry wells. Okay. All right.
The only, I keep getting back to, when are you moving out? Because if we're passing a resolution that says we're gonna limit the use of the salt storage to nine P M, except for a declared snow emergency, I don't think we can have it that says after North Country Snow and Ice moves out. Shouldn't it be nine P M? For, are any tenant there?
Excuse me?
It's, it is, it is hard to say, I mean-
I'm at the point where I'm ramping up with the town to get my C L up there.
Right.
I have a few things I still have to do for zoning on the property that we're on now. We're working on that. Um, I anticipate, the offices are done. I anticipate moving out of there by the end of summer, before winter time.
Before winter time, you, you anticipate being-
Correct.
Over at the other side.
That's the offices.
Right.
Not the salt bin.
Right.
No, no.
So you're saying you're not gonna use this, you're not using the salt storage bin after nine P M unless it's a declared snow emergency?
Uh, after they move out.
Well, he just said they're moving out this summer.
Them moving out of the offices.
When do you think, when do you think you'll be out for salt?
I'm working on a location for that right now, and that's gonna be over at Big Bay.
Yep.
But that's gotta go through site plan review. We're just starting that, so that's gonna-
It's gonna be-
Be determined by the town.
I thought you said when he moved out, you were the one that was going to just maintain the salt storage bin- I thought you said when he moved out, you were the one that was going to just maintain the salt storage bin for yourself.
I think it's a two-phase, the way I'm understanding it, it's a two-phase that the, the offices are moving and are pretty much done and...
Yeah.
Moving on by the end of the summer.
And I'm currently working.
On getting...
On site plan review to be able to move over there. I have to figure out, we have to figure out what Queensbury's going to require of us. Of course, we're on Big Bay. It is industrial over there. So it's a little bit different.
Yep.
So we're, we're working on that.
So, you know, as far as the timetable, I don't know.
Should, should this be a timely episode?
There's a lot of unknown answers. I, I'm confused because you're, I thought you said when they move out, you were the only one going to use the salt storage bin?
Right. When they move out.
Of the, of the offices? Now you're saying of the offices only?
Of the offices only because I'm...
You're still not using the salt storage bin?
Yep.
Until they have the use of it on another property? And then once that happens, then you're the only one using it?
That could be two years from now.
That's not going to be two years. Trust me. I can't take two more years of the neighbors. Honestly, I've tried and worked very hard with that over there.
And we appreciate it. What's the, what's the feeling of the board? Do we want to move this ahead with a motion? In a motion that would limit? Limit the use of the salt storage bin to nine o'clock on non-declared, non-snow emergency declared days? Which is the, which is what I'm tending to lean towards.
For any tenant?
For any tenant.
Whether it's they move out or not?
Well, Scott has stated that they're in the process of moving that out. And I, and I believe that's the cleanest way to make this happen. Does anybody have any difference of opinion on that?
It makes sense.
It does.
Yeah, it's a snow emergency. You've got to help everybody.
Is there...
Who gets the declared snow emergency? How does that happen?
It's done by the city.
I mean, that's an actual...
Yes. Major issues of statement.
Is there any secret?
Uh, are you also in your motion going to specify the type of fence?
Yes, they've stated in their testimony that it's a six-foot-high wooden stockade fence. Is that correct?
And the hours of operation for overtime autos?
Seven A M to six P M.
And there's no storage of heavy equipment?
No storage of heavy equipment in the overtime auto yard. The only storage of heavy equipment would be on the, at the salt storage area. Yes. Okay. Which is separated by, that's why I asked if it was separated by the Jersey barrier.
What would happen if overtime got a, a...
What kind of equipment?
A piece of equipment, you know, like a tractor or something.
I, I would say for, for removal of their own, removal of snow on their own lot.
No, he's saying that they, they got a job to fix somebody's loader or something. Long as it's not there forever, I mean, that's a part of them doing business, right?
Right.
It's not yet part of their normal operation.
Uh, the seeker I would classify it as an unlisted action, therefore we need to review the short environmental assessment form part two. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land whose plan or zoning regulations?
I would say no.
Will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of the land? Board needs to answer yes or no.
No.
No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
I think with the conditions that we're setting on this, no.
So no or small impact?
No or small impact. If anybody has anything that they want to add to that, please speak up because it just triggers a different list of questions.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transportation or walkway?
I think that with the, with the conditions that we're imposing, it'll actually reduce that.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact public-private water supplies?
No.
Will the proposed action impact public-private wastewater treatment?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Based upon the board's answers, you could issue a negative declaration.
I would make a motion that the Glen's Falls Planning Board hereby accepts lead agency status for the applicant. Uh, two oh nine Maple LLC Frank Leo. Owner of region of the property located at two oh seven Maple Street. Uh, the board has determined the action to be an unlisted action and has reviewed the short form environmental assessment form that was submitted upon documentation and discussion issues a negative declaration. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Get that part out of the way. Three, three conditions that I read here. Overtime Autos, hours of operation seven A M to six P M. The six-foot fence along the western property line between the two properties will be a six-foot stockade wooden fence. The front of the property would not be able to be 16 feet all the way to the property. As we discussed, it can stop at the front of the building. And the hours of operation for the, for the salt bin would be until nine P M on non-declared, non-snow emergency declared minutes. Right?
No storage of heavy equipment?
No, no storage of heavy equipment on the overtime auto unless it's something that's being worked on by, by the facility.
Do you want to say that the hours for overtime auto Monday through Friday?
I don't know that we can limit Monday through Friday. I, I think we've, we've established seven A M to six P M. I don't think we can establish days of the week.
And did we also say no commercial sale of the salt?
Yes. And that's been, that's been stated by the...
I just wanted the resolution. And Porta Potty, can that be moved once North Country moves out?
It's gone.
It's gone?
We only have it there for about three or four months in the winter.
When you move out and establish your offices elsewhere, is there any reason to have Porta Potty on this property?
I would say yes unless I use the salt bin more than I anticipate. As of right now, I'm already using for backup, you know, emergency.
Right.
So I wouldn't need a Porta Potty there now. But I got the Porta Potty around the backside of the building now.
Yeah, it's around the backside. So we, honestly, it's, I don't think that it's a bad thing to have on the site as long as it's not, you know, on the opposite side right next to the residential portion. It has been removed at this point.
Could we say that it would only be there during what? November to March?
Sure. Yeah.
No, it's okay. Then I would make a motion that the Glen's Falls Planning Board, acting as the board of site plan review hereby grants site plan approval for the project identified as two oh nine Maple LLC Frank Leo, owner of the property located at two oh seven Maple Street, as presented at the meeting of seven May twenty twenty four, subject to the, to the conditions that were noted. Uh, six-foot-high wooden stockade fence along the western property line. Uh, the, uh, the portable toilet would only be installed November to March. It will be installed on the east side of the existing, uh, salt bin. Uh, that overtime autos, hours of operation seven A M to six P M, that they will not have any, overtime auto will not have any onsite equipment other than that what is being worked on. And the hours of operation for the salt storage bin, which would be just for the owner's use uh, once the existing, once the existing property has been vacated by North Country Snow and Ice, would be until nine P M on a non-emergency declared snow emergency days. I believe that's it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Um, I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalton?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner...
Yes.
Commissioner Agnew?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, industrial zone, absolutely. But that's a Queensbury. Okay. Uh, our next order of business is a subdivision, uh, it's twenty-four dash zero 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 three NAP Holdings LLC. James NAP, owner of tax map number three zero three point one seven dash one two dash one and, dash one and two, commonly known as eleven Walnut and sixteen Cooper Street. Seeking the approval of a lot line adjustment between parcels A and parcel B to consolidate both parcels and alleviate the encroachment on the pre-existing structure. Pursuant to the city of Glen's Falls chap, code, chapter one ninety-two dash four. This would require planning board review and approval. Is there anybody here to represent this application? Please. If you could state your name. Oh, it is lot line adjustment instead of subdivision. So I've been corrected by the city staff that this is a lot line adjustment, not a subdivision. If you could state your name.
Andrea Murray.
Jim Ned.
Um, tell us about your project, what you got going on.
Uh, so right now the principal building spreads across the two lots. So we're looking to consolidate the two, um, to stop the encroachment and bring the lot further into zoning compliance.
Correct. This is, this property does front on both Cooper and Walnut, correct?
Correct.
So you do have that parcel that goes through. So currently the, the lot line comes from the corner, uh, which is kind of inside the building now and extends all the way out to Cooper Street in that direction. So you've got parcel A, which is on the top. Yep. Parcel B, which is on the bottom. The idea is to take away that property line in between them, create one, just one property, which then takes care of many of the issues that are on the site, correct?
Correct.
Um, is there anyone from the public wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none, I will start with the holding question. Do you have any attendance room?
I have no objections.
Okay. Uh, start with Tom. So, key, any questions for you? Do you have anything else that you wanted to add to your application before you...
So I think that, that covers it, I think, pretty much.
Uh, it makes, makes perfect sense to me.
Right.
It really does.
Okay. Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. Yeah.
Karen, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No.
No, I agree.
Uh, I have no issue with it.
Tom?
No issue.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I looked at it. I think it makes sense, um, how the building got built across the property line in the first place. Probably. Don't ask questions that you don't want answers to. Is there any seeker in your...
With respect to seeker, I would classify it as a type two, as it's a lot line adjustment, therefore no further actions required.
Then I would make the motion. Got to try and figure out how to word this one. I'd make a motion that the Glen's Falls Planning Board, uh, acting as the board of site plan review hereby grants the lot line adjustment for the project identified as NAP Holdings LLC, uh, owner of tax, tax, tax map numbers three zero three point one seven dash two dash one and three zero three point one seven dash twelve dash two, um, as presented at the meeting of seven May twenty twenty four, subject to no conditions. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? That one was quick.
We hope it was easy for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we do the text, we have to ask you a... Oh, did you need me to sign? Uh, we'll move on to our next one, which is Site Plan Review twenty-four dash zero 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 three, Fitzgerald Brothers Bottling Incorporated. Ryan Feifield representing the owners of tax map numbers three zero three point one four dash one dash fourteen, commonly known as one fifty-two Dix Avenue. Pursuant to the city of Glen's Falls Code, chapter two twenty dash twenty-seven, section D, as presented at the, and I'm correcting this, it's at the planning board meeting in the eighteen March. That was a zoning board meeting in the eighteen March. Uh, this approval is conditioned upon the following. An approved stormwater management plan, written agreement with the neighbor Ellen Trolstra, owner of tax map number three zero three point one four dash one dash sixteen point one, commonly known as one sixty-six Dix Avenue to encroach on their property. For the record.
Uh, Tom Center with Hutchins Engineering, uh, Brian Feifield, uh, from Fitzgerald Brothers here in the audience. Pretty straightforward project. We received the variance from the zoning board, uh, for the additional relief for the coverage. What we tried to do was incorporate the stormwater from the entire site, not just from the new asphalt pavement that was added. Based on some comments we had from the Tolsters, from the neighbors to the, to the west. One of the few things were added. Uh, we have the swell along the east side, um, which directs stormwater runoff from that side of the building. Some of it goes towards Dix Avenue out to a catch basin with the city, which we've discussed with the city and Tom Gerard that there has, they haven't seen. This is, all this work that I'm describing, except for the new stormwater devices, has actually already been built. And so the waters are already going in these directions. So got to explain what's going on a little bit. There's, there's work that's already been built, that's already going in these directions. That's why we're explaining that we, we talked with the city. They've had a chance to see it during this rainy season that we've had. It has not caused any issues out on the Dix Avenue. Uh, it's also kept a lot of the water off of the Tolsters property and kept it going in the, uh, in the drip line because we did a paved wing swell there. One of the things we're going to add to that based on the zoning board was, uh, we have an agreement that we're working on with the Tolsters that we'll provide after this meeting before the, the plans are finalized, um, with the, with the planning department. Is, uh, in the corner of the Tolsters property, we are going to add a berm over the property line on their property to direct stormwater, to keep the stormwater on our property. We're also adding a berm, uh, to back up that wing swell to keep anything from jumping the wing swell onto their property so it stays, uh, on the Fitzgerald Brothers property. But if everything goes well this evening, we will include that in our final package, uh, in the approval package. That agreement, I spoke with Eric tonight. We just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else that needed to be added to it. No sense in doing it twice. Along the, uh, north side of the project, we're adding a hundred and seventy linear feet of four-foot wide by two-foot trench. Um, along the west side, a hundred and ninety feet of four-foot wide by two-foot deep trench. And this is to capture the water first and direct it towards the infiltration or retention pond in the rear. And then the, the north part of the parcel will provide, will provide a, uh, retention pond to capture the water. Provide two discharge points in the path that it's already going off of now. All of this water right now is directed to that area. Um, I've watched it since I got involved in the project late July, early August. That we've been able, we haven't created a problem there already without these devices. So once we add these devices, we don't expect to be, have any issue, uh, on the, on the backside of the property. We're adding devices to kind of capture the stormwater and manage it on the property. Right now, there's, there's nothing. It's going directly off the back of the property towards Dr. Bender's, which there's a... which there's a, there's a natural draw that goes to a pulver pipe under his driveway and then out to the wetlands in the back. But all the work that we're doing is gonna try to manage that and slow down the volume and the rate that goes off towards, towards Dr. Bender's. With that, there were some questions, uh, when Chazen reviewed it, when I reviewed this with Jeremy Schneible, uh, and Bill Norton down at the, uh, the city, city engineer and the water superintendent, that they were looking for some direction from you. We are less than a neighbor in disturbance, so we really don't meet the stormwater design guideline for management. So we're trying to do best practice, the most we can do on the site. Um, the, the design manual is really for virgin projects, virgin sites. We're trying to manage more than just the water coming off of the new asphalt.
Not necessarily, the, the, the design manual is not necessarily scoped and scripted towards redevelopment.
Correct, correct.
It's more for?
It's, it's more for new development or virgin sites, larger sites, larger disturbances. So there's some confusion there. A lot of the times when we've done these projects in the past, when, um, Mr. Gerzer was the city engineer, we sat down together, hey, this is what we're doing, this is where we can meet, this is what we can do. Are we doing the best for the site, best for the city and best for the neighborhood? And I took that same tactic and, you know, worked with the neighbors and came up with a plan that's before. And again, this water is already going in that direction, hasn't caused a huge problem, but there is a runoff directed in that, in that area. It will still runoff, but we want to control that runoff in these devices and have it go off at, at the same or reduced rate than it is now.
And because this was gravel before, which crushed stone gravel, I mean, technically it's non-permeable surface. You know, my feeling, and the board will actually look at this, as it being a paved surface, I think it winds up being cleaner, less erosion when it comes off of it as a paved site versus if it was gravel, we're getting the, the, the fines on the top.
Yes. And even more so with that is because we're gonna stone that slope in the, in the rear as part of this project when we create that swell. So that's a steeper slope than we like with topsoil and seed, so we're going to provide large riprap stone on that sloped area and then grass in the pond and grass burn on the backside. So where, where we have, what's that?
That's indicated on the details.
Yeah, that's indicated on the details. Um, one of the other things that we added in here, uh, with the city's parking requirements, um, because it's a warehouse, uh, it's by square foot and the city's requiring seventy-six parking spaces. We don't need seventy-six parking spaces. Um, forty-two is enough currently for the workers that are there, plus the offsite employees that occasionally come to site. So we're not trying to add any additional, you know, parking, you know, we're asking for a waiver. We need, we need to ask for a waiver from the planning board for this. It's not a variance, it's a waiver request. So we're just looking to, uh, to make that, uh, a condition of approval that we can, uh, receive that waiver. And after that, I'll just take any questions that you folks may have. Let's, sure, sweet.
Thank you, Tom. Um, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none, uh, we have no written comments on this one. Um, I will start with Ms. Andrews.
Uh, I think you answered my question. I just wanted to verify what the nature of the encroachment was, because you said part of this is contingent upon getting permission from the neighbors. Is that swale?
Correct. It's, it's, it's in this corner, uh, that I delineated that we're working with the, with the neighbor. That's one of the things they asked. It's, it's kind, that slope goes down steeper into their property than it does on ours.
Right.
Um, so the swell would get really, we don't have enough room to do it on our parcel. So in working with them, we're gonna extend that, uh, that berm as much as we can.
Right, because the painting goes right up to the chair.
Yep, yep.
So you're working with them and that's gonna be all continued?
Yep, I, I, both, both Fred and his brother Eric, I've, I've done other projects outside with them, uh, through Hutchins, so we have a relationship and, uh, work that with our client to kind of bring everybody together and pull some solutions on this.
Um, as far as the parking goes, I mean, my feeling is, I'm doing more parking than I need to. Um, I, although I do have one question, which may not even be relevant, but the paved area in the back, so that's just gonna be wide open.
There, there, it's a lot of turning radiuses, because you got, you've got tractor trailers that have to come around that corner and there are a few, uh, spare trailers that are stored in the back end. That's, that's why I was extended. So there is some storage back there for trailers or tractors in the back. Most of their, of their, uh, daily use vehicles are stored inside.
And are you proposing any new site lighting?
Yep. The building is, the, the building permit, everything for the building was reviewed and approved prior to this and there's, there's no lighting included in this project.
I don't have any other comments.
That's okay. Mr. Landry, I'll start with you.
I don't have any problems. In fact, I had the chance to get out there and take a look at it. It looked like you had a pretty good system there and it works. And then, you know, this looks like you're gonna build a, you know, do nothing but approve it, so. No, I have no, no questions.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, amazing. It looks like it's gonna be an improvement, so.
Sure.
Agreed.
Ms. Andrews?
No questions.
Um, looking at the, the spans that you have back there, uh, I didn't have a pretty good look at it yesterday. Um, everything basically shuts off in whatever direction that the, that the blacktop is allowing. There was no consideration for drywells and treatment?
Uh, having grown up in this area, uh, and knowing the groundwater issues, there really isn't a lot of groundwater to get a volume in there to allow it to go out and have separation with groundwater. As it is, this berm is at grade and built up from grade. We're not going down into grade. We kept those, um, uh, the trenches, we kept infill areas up by the parking area, knowing, you know, we have, uh...
So you got high water.
So, yeah, there's, there's high ground. You can't, a drywall is, you know, a minimum of four feet deep, then you need, you know, two more feet of separation from groundwater below that or boundary. It's very tight soils, this has been used as an industrial site for a long time. Um, it, drywall is really, it's not a good stuff for that.
Yeah, just looking at the spans.
I would, I would have preferred to do it with drywells and if we had the soils, that, that would have been something that we would have done, but, uh, but not in these soils.
Okay, thank you.
The, the other item that I was talking about is that we're right next to the rock quarry.
Yeah.
You're not very far away from ledge right there. Uh, my, my office being, my office being one parcel over from this, uh, when they did, my office founded, they dug four test holes and they got, thought that they were gonna have seven foot, so they were gonna have a nice basement and they started digging the whole thing and it was a big hole there. It's four foot basement. But ledge rock, I mean, the quarry is...
That quarry is right, is right behind them.
Dr. Bender's property is the quarry, the old stone quarry. And that hole in, that, that hole end of, that east end of the property, uh, when Leland was doing the big, Leland Paper Company, when they were doing that big project up there, they're sitting right on that rock there.
It's amazing. It's the high point of the city, too.
It is. Um, the only other question I had, Tom, and I, I have no issues with the, the other items. Um, was there any additional landscaping for those berms as far as?
Uh, I believe there's already, there's already a line of, of trees.
There is a hedgerow.
There's a hedgerow there that's on the line in, in between the two parcels, so to maintain that. We're just, we're just literally creating a mulch berm to back up that. It's not really building a, a large berm, it's a berm to back up that wing swell so that nothing can jump.
So that nothing goes over the top.
Yep.
Okay, all right. I was just, I was wondering what that, you know, just for maintenance purposes, how it was, how that was gonna be maintained. Okay. Um, I have no other issues with this. I'm gonna ask you for seeker.
Yeah, with respect to seeker, I classify it as an unlisted action again, according to review court two. Number one, will proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted and amended land and zoning regulation?
No.
No. Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will proposed action have an impact on the, on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of critical environmental failure?
No.
Will proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic or effect, existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will proposed action have an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable, available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies?
No.
No. Public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No. Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Will proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor or water?
No.
No. Will proposed action result in an increase for potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
Exactly.
Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Based upon the board's responses, you could issue a negative declaration.
I have made a motion for Glens Falls Planning Board hereby accept lead ABC status for the applicant. Uh, Fitzgerald Brothers Bottling Incorporated, uh, owners of the property located at one fifty-two Dix Avenue. The board has determined the action to be an unlisted action and has reviewed the short form environmental assessment form and upon documentation and discussion, issues a negative declaration. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Carrie? Got a second, Ms. Natalie, wait for a minute. I believe that we have, the only, uh, condition or the only thing that we talked about was the waiver for parking. Was there anything else on this that we need to add in and add motion for approval?
The Z P A said we need the written encroachment.
Yeah, we'll have that. Now that we don't have to add anything, you know, based on this board's review, um, we will have that with the final package that we spent signing and stamped and we'll include that.
And, uh, approval of this stormwater?
Correct. And, yeah, we were just looking for, I, I think, uh, in Jeremy's letter, he was looking just for some clarification, what the parameters that the board was looking at, having us comply with. Um, I don't know how you wanna handle that.
Because it's, because it's...
Because it's kind of, it's integrated area, yeah, because it's redevelopment and, you know, moving forward with that. Because you can get very technical in, in the manual and I think we've...
There, there's a lot of technicality in the stormwater design manual that, as you had stated previously, really doesn't apply to redevelopment of sites. It's, it's basically for the beginning of the site or a site that's, that's raw ground. Um, so I, I think that we're, does anybody have any objection to approving the stormwater plan as it's presented?
No.
Um, then I would make motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review, hereby grant site plan approval for the project identified as Fitzgerald Brothers Bottling Incorporated, uh, located at one fifty-two Dix Avenue, uh, as presented at the meeting of seven May twenty twenty-four, uh, with the following, uh, conditions, that the stormwater management plan as presented is, is approved by this board, uh, that a written agreement with the neighbor Ellen Trollstra, uh, owner of tax map number three zero three point one four dash one dash sixteen point one, commonly known as one sixty-six Dix Avenue, to encroach on their property for the installation of the mulch berm, uh, be provided and that the planning board issues the waiver of the parking requirement, uh, to allow for the forty-two...
Forty-two.
Forty-two parking spaces that are currently included on the site in lieu of the seventy-six that would be required by zoning. Can I get a second?
Second.
I'll let you choose to set it for a second. Everybody in agreement on that? All approved?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Any motion carries? I think you're all set.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, our next item for review is Site Plan Review twenty-four dash zero 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 five, King Exotic. Uh, Darren Nagy, uh, leasing of the tax map number three zero three point one four dash five dash three, commonly known as two seventeen Dix Avenue, seeking planning board review and approval for a smoke shop pursuant to city of Glens Falls code, chapter two twenty dash one seven, section B one and section seven dash twelve. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mohamed Najib.
Darren Najib.
Thank you.
What was your name?
Mohamed. I'm gonna speak about Mohamed.
The lesson?
Najib, same as.
Okay.
Um, tell us about your project.
So we have a couple, uh, locations in here upstate New York. We carry all kinds of stuff. We have, uh, CBD, snacks from around the world, glass, smoking accessories, tobacco, tobacco pipes, all kinds of stuff. And, um, uh, we've been working on this Dix Avenue location. We finished everything, we got it all set up and then when I went to go get the inspection and, uh, get all that stuff done, they came and they said we needed the, the, what's it called, change of tenancy?
Site plan review does a change of tenancy.
Yeah, change of tenancy.
Before we either rented the place, we came here to this building and we gave them the address. Because when I go in, I spend almost around a hundred and eighty on the strip. So before I started any work, I came to this building, I asked them, I gave them the address and they told me there's no problems. So I went and I rented it out, I started working on it, I finished it, it's been set for almost two months now. So when we called the inspector and he came in, he said, I think you guys have to go to a meeting.
Okay.
So that's no problem.
Because it, because it was change of occupancy, not just change of tenancy.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Because when I rented it out, I asked the landlord and he told me it was a retail space. So maybe I have thirty-two locations, so if it was a retail, I thought it was, we didn't have to do no change of use.
Um, technically it was office prior to.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
So, but, so it is change of use because it was, formerly it was Sterling, uh, Sterling Insurance.
Yeah.
Was the last one that was in there. And that was the original tenant when that whole complex, the Eastfield, uh, complex came into, came into being, so. Unfortunately, kind of got caught up in that.
Yeah, I didn't know. And I was scared because I spent a lot of money. The decor itself, it cost me around eighty K. They came all the way from the city, it's like a team I have.
Okay.
And when they told me, oh, you might have a problem, so I got a little scared. So I hope there's no problem with it.
Here we are. Okay.
And I also have the license, everything is legal and everything.
Okay. For the, for the business owner?
Yeah.
Uh, anything else that you wanna add to the, to the application?
Nothing.
No? Um, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none, I don't think we have anything written, is that correct? Not the...
No, no.
Um, I will start with our architecture consultant.
So, um, within your zoning district, this is an accepted use. I guess my question is, did you apply, did you guys apply for signage permits? That, that was sort of my only, you have enough parking, I see that on site, um, you want to do it in terms? I think that's what created the problem for a lot of things being done with the site without a proper mess.
I mean, I didn't do no work, no, I didn't do no major work. Even the signs, I didn't like put no nails or nothing, the signs were all set. But we're just like the paper sign, uh, we just slide it in, nothing was worked on at the...
So, I know, these are actually there, right? This isn't a computer?
Yeah, everything was there.
So that's, so this is a real picture?
Yeah, we just slide in the piece of sign in there.
So I guess what I, my understanding is there's a sign application and the, the zoning is gonna talk about how big the sign can be?
I, yeah, I spoke to Philip about that and we measured the signs, it was four, I believe it was four by eight.
Yeah.
Which was right below the limit. I know it was, uh, the, the limit was, was it four by six on the code?
Twenty, twenty percent of your window area, you're allowed to have signage in.
Yeah.
And then the, it's, yeah, the, the front signage is four by eight.
Yeah.
A two-sided sign.
Yeah.
And this, this building also has one on the facade, that's an allowed sign. Again, all you did with these was change the sign face, correct? The size of the sign.
No, no, no. No work was done. And the signs that was on the window is three D signs, so when somebody looks at them at night, they think that it's LED lights.
Right.
And it's a three D sign, it's new, it just came out. So when you look at it at night and then afternoon, it's way different.
Right.
It shines at night and people think that it's LED lights and, and it's a three D sign.
So yes, so maybe it's a question of, of completing, did, did you do a sign application? Maybe that's just what we need to...
I, I, we talked to the inspector, he said, you guys not doing any work on the building or any break-in and any construction, that nothing has to be done, but if there's any application, that only got a problem.
I mean, I'll put that comment out there that, you know, for signage. I mean, I'll put that comment out there that for signage. Generally, there's a separate sign up to cross the Ts and dot the Is. And looking at the pictures, the only comment I really had was that you need to be a little bit careful. Those window decals in the zoning code, it says that you can cover 20% of the window area.
Yeah, I mean, it's not even 20%, because it's only the top section. And then we have three of the...
But again, just sort of complying with what's called for in code, you'll want to verify that and put it in writing for the actual application.
If anything, if you guys want me to take the front signs in the windows and just leave the ones on the side in the back, that's no problem. That's going to make it more easier.
So I think that what Nina's kind of pointing towards, I think there's a calculation that needs to be provided to the city. And what would need to happen is you just need to measure the total area of windows and then, yep, the total area of windows on all sides. Get the total area of those windows and then figure out what the total area of the signage in those windows is. And as long as you're not over 20%, then you're okay.
Okay, this situation, do I do, when I go get the signs permit?
Yes.
Just figure it out?
It's right, there's a portion of it right on there that asks.
Okay, no problem.
I think it's okay if you're asking for more.
Then it's a sign variance.
No, that's more than that.
If you're not asking for more, it's just a permit application and it's done.
Yeah, no problem. I'll get that done tomorrow morning.
Okay, perfect. Got anything?
I don't have any other comments.
Where is there, I'm going to start with Keith.
No comments, so let me see if I can find it.
I just have one question. You said one employee and you expect five customers a day?
I filled that out with the landlord. Because I did all the paperwork, I did it with the landlord and he told me just to put that for now. I mean, it's going to be pretty slow. Our marketing takes two to three months until it gets out there.
So we have another location here right by Hannifer.
I thought so.
Yeah, that's ours. So in the beginning, it takes us about three to four months till we grab more customers in. We do a, what do you call it?
On Instagram, Facebook.
Exotic snacks from China, Canada, Florida, we bring all types of snacks.
Okay.
So we don't have two employees, morning and night, and we don't be open from 10 to 10, seven days a week.
10 to 10, Saturday.
I just thought that was interesting. I had a guest spot. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah. No, I have no questions.
Just one quick question. Do you sell cannabis, sir?
No cannabis. We don't have the cannabis license, but I'm working on that. I might open a dispensary here. I really got approved for Rutherford, New York and Albany, New York. I really got the license. But hopefully that's going to be our next meeting. If I get approved, I'm all set.
Yeah, the only questions and the only thing that I, that I would caution you on is be careful with the LEDs. If you do put it, you know, I know a lot of these places are putting in LEDs and flashing signs and things like that. And our sign code is very strict about what's allowed for that. So just bear that in mind. Obviously, I think that what's been done here was not done with any ill intent. I think it was just not understanding everything that was being required. That building has been there for a significant amount of time. I know it sat vacant for the better part of a year, so I'm happy to see somebody actually moving in there that's contributing to the tax base of the city of Glen's Falls here. So outside of that, I didn't have any other issues. Do we have a secret on this?
Oh, I would classify it as a Type 2 action, therefore, no further actions required by the board.
Would someone like to form a motion for this?
So do you have a condition that...
The only condition would be the sign permit application being filed with the city building department.
I got a question. So after I'm done with the signing, am I fine to open up or?
Yes, sir.
That's it?
Once you get this approved from this board for site plan review, then the sign application gets turned into the building department. They'll review that and determine whether or not if a variance is required or not. If they determine that there's no variance required, it's a simple matter of paying the sign permit fee. And then you should be able to apply for your certificate of occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
I would love it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion of the Glen's Falls Planning Board, acting as the board of site plan review, hereby grant site plan approval for the project identified as Canyon Exotic, and, excuse me, located at 217 Dix Avenue, with the condition that they complete the sign application and file it with the city's building department as presented at the meeting of May 7, 2024.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? You're all set. The next item is giving the sign application together, file that with the building permit or building department. Should be all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item on our agenda, or last item on our agenda, is a sketch plan review pursuant to City Code 220-27, Section B, Subsection 2. Matthew Hummel is the applicant, representing the owner Howard and Liebels, tax map number 310.5-3-8, commonly known as 91 to 93 Warren Street, is seeking a sketch plan review to finish a new basement, walkout kitchen, and first floor dining and event center. Is anyone here representing this application? Don't see Matthew here. Counselor?
Oh, you want to table it?
I think...
I mean, sketch plan review.
Sketch plan review and there were some questions that would be formulated from, I know Ms. Olmecos had some questions on it. I have two questions myself. But I don't see anybody here. Right. Well, I'm not, it was Neil. Neil was here for sure.
He's one of the owners, probably owners.
Neil is?
He's a member of that bracket.
He's listed on it. I am surprised there's nobody here for that. At this point, with nobody here for this, I would present a motion that we table this item until the applicant is here to present. Can I get a second? All in favor? Any opposed? I also think that we're going to have to table the first item, which was the site plan review for Plute Enterprises. So I would make a motion that we table Site Plan Review 24-0002, Plute Enterprises, until the applicant is here to present the project. Can I get a second on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Table that one as well. That is the only items that are on our agenda. We do have one item that was brought to my attention via a mailing that I received on May 1, 2024. I'm sure that you got a copy of this as well, yes. So this was provided to the planning board and to all of us. Did everybody get a copy of this?
Yeah.
This is the recommendation to the common council for the rezoning of the two parcels on Bacon Street, which was number one and number three Bacon Street. Chairman Paul and members of the planning board, Attorney Mr. Kinsler and Mr. Gray. Ethan, or Gaddy, I'm sorry. Mr. Gaddy is the Warren County Planner. Pursuant to the City of Glen's Falls Common Council Resolution Number 125 of Tuesday, April 23, 2024, as enclosed, I am forwarding to your respective offices the required information to commence the review process on the above referenced proposed amendment of the City of Glen's Falls Code, Chapter 220-6 zoning. Per the zoning code of the City of Glen's Falls, Section 220-4-A, Subsection 1, the City of Glen's Falls Planning Board is required to submit an advisory report to the common council as follows. Each such proposed amendment or change shall be referred to the planning board. The planning board shall submit to the common council its advisory report within 30 days after receiving notice from the city clerk of the proposed change. Failure to make such report within 35 days shall be deemed a favorable recommendation. Also, the zoning code of the City of Glen's Falls, Section 220-48A, Subsection 3, reads as follows. Required referral, the city clerk shall promptly transmit to the Warren County Planning Board any matters required to be referenced or referred pursuant to provisions of Section 239-L and 239-M of the General Municipal Law. Sections 239-L and Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law require that any municipality or any municipal zoning regulation or amendment to a zoning regulation, which would change the district classification of or the regulations applying to real property lying within a distance of 500 feet from the boundary of any city, village, or town, or existing or proposed county or state park, or other recreational area, any right-of-way or stream or drainage channel owned by the county for which the county has established channel lines, any existing or proposed boundary of any county or state-owned land on which a public building or institution is situated. No proposed amendment shall be acted upon until a recommendation has been received from the county planning board or 30 calendar days have elapsed since the county planning board received all materials relevant to such proposed amendment. The City of Glen's Falls has not yet scheduled a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to Chapter 220-6 zoning of the Code of the City of Glen's Falls, as referenced on page 1 of this letter. The Glen's Falls Common Council will wait making a decision until an advisory report from the planning board on the proposal has been made. This is from Megan Nolan, the city clerk of the City of Glen's Falls.
So you may recall that you've already done an advisory opinion relative to this project on Glen. They came in and asked for rezoning of 4 Sherman Avenue, which is the parking lot. And you issued an advisory opinion. And then when they were in the planning, they thought if they bought 1 and 3 Bacon, they would take over the whole corner.
Correct. Which... Now, I know when we looked at this originally, it was just for Sherman. And that's when Chuck Marshing from Stewart's here made the presentation to us. I know that they've been back and forth with the common council a couple of times. They have purchased number one and number three Bacon Street and they're looking at possibly reorienting the building on the site. I know that we do not have that, we've not seen that site plan. So, and again, we're not, what we're being charged with tonight is just a recommendation to the common council regarding the rezoning of those two parcels on 1 and 3 Bacon Street. Again, we reviewed the proposed plan that we had had from Stewart's previous.
Before Sherman Avenue.
And I don't believe that we've seen an updated plan that shows...
Yeah, where the stores were owned.
Yeah.
So my only question about it would be, because Chapman is right there. Is there, it's not state-owned, it's not, I don't think, it's not county-owned. But is it historic so that there's any reason to be concerned?
No, if they were physically going to alter Chapman, then yes. But if it's across the street, it's just an adjacent property.
What they did before, they were keeping the store where it was and they were going to put the gas pumps in the vacant lot on 4 Sherman. Now, when they came for the common council, they oriented it totally different. They're tearing, it would appear they would tear down Stewart's and they would move it back. The pumps would still stay in front and they would have parking around the building, which includes 1 and 3 Bacon.
What about 5 Bacon?
5 Bacon is not...
I know that's going to greatly affect them. They're not street rungs now. Their property value, like 1 and 3 obviously made out. They're moving and leaving and now you have number 5, if you're that person, you're, you have this problem. That's who we represent.
What's the zoning applied? What are, what are 1 and 3 Bacon?
RM, multifamily residential.
What is it?
Multifamily residential, which is the same as what Sherman Avenue, the Sherman Avenue portion had the parking lot.
And it would go into a... And it would alter, what we haven't seen yet is how it would alter the...
Well, and again, we can't lose sight of the fact that all we're being tasked with tonight is just a recommendation to rezonate the two parcels.
I just, I don't hear that. The Stewart's resolution I hear from the county council is stating that we're zoning, but...
Sir, sir, if you can approach and give your name just so that we're not, so we can get you on the record.
The county council is at our meeting, last meeting.
What's your name, sir?
I'm Brian Haxtrant and I'm at 5 Bacon. I'm the one that gets affected most. Plus my neighbors, I'm not only here for myself, I have 7 Bacon, I have Sherman Avenue. This county council has asked you to rezonate and take into consideration moving the proposed building farther away from homes on Bacon Street with me and the other people on 7 Bacon and Sherman Avenue. And that's what this resolution says for you at this meeting to take into consideration.
Sir, don't believe, this is all we're doing tonight is an advisory opinion? We have no plans in front of us. Nothing has been submitted to us other than this request for the rezonate.
Now, I ask you, when does the public get to see those plans? Who gets it? When do I get to see those before you guys vote on it?
When an application is made to us for site plan review.
So when do I get notified?
When they make, when Stewart's...
To look at Stewart's.
Trying to answer your question, sir. When Stewart makes an application to this board for site plan review, his surrounding neighbors would be notified.
Okay.
And we do not have that application.
Then the plans are available for the public, number 7 Bacon Street, number 5 Bacon Street. The other part of that, because I don't normally come to these meetings and I wouldn't really come to this one because Stewart's is not, excuse me, Stewart's is not on the agenda.
Correct.
So how are we going to be bringing it up now?
Where?
You're going to vote on this one?
No.
Thank you.
No.
I was a little confused that you were going to vote on this particular...
No, we're being asked for a recommendation at this point.
Well, again, being asked for a recommendation...
You can't do it, sir.
No, I'm just, I'm bringing this up to make sure that everybody got this, who are we talking about?
The chairman was just saying, a matter of his issue, you all should have received it. We have 30 days, five days to act on it. It will be on next month's general...
So we can do our research and see what's going on with this.
Okay. Again, it was not on the agenda. What you're discussing now, the public didn't know about. I was sitting here.
What the chairman did is just brought to everyone's attention that we all got a letter saying that it was referred to the planning board for an advisory opinion. Just wanting to make sure everyone got the letter. And if there's any questions, you know, Matt Fuller is the attorney for Stewart's or they can go look at the site themselves. It'll be on the June agenda for an advisory opinion only. If we give a favorable advisory opinion, it goes back to the common council. Common council is the board that would actually do the rezoning. If the rezoning is granted, then Stewart's would have to make an application for site plan review back to this board.
Okay. And what period of time does that usually take?
Well, if we are going to hear this application advisory opinion, then in June, the common council may decide to put it on for public hearing sometime in June or July. And they may vote on it in July. And then if Stewart's got their rezoning, they might be ready to come back before this board by August or September. So you've got a few months of process.
Okay, I didn't know the process as far as here. As far as here, I thank you, thank you for what you had said about people's...
I didn't realize it was your address. We represent the city and we are all citizens here. Without, we represent the city and, and we are all citizens here. So we try to use as best as we can. Make it for, for reference going through it. Everybody's education.
Okay, thank you for the process and, uh, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, so that, you know, as I said, we go through that and reading through it. I just wanted to read it into the record and make sure that it was picked up and that everybody got a copy of it. Um, and none of us have seen any of these plans yet, so there's not really a whole lot for us to do. I'm sure that, um, Chuck Marshall, will we back here now that we have gotten this?
It'll be on the agenda and you'll get the letter, yes.
And then we'll just go through and then look at it that way. Um, tape. Um, there was one other item that came up, um, that Ms. Holmquist asked of me and I will ask it of the board. Um, Nina has asked me, um, to clarify or to give her some feedback and she's new to this position.
I was just, yeah, no, my, my, my question is, are my comments helpful? Oh, God. Are they?
You're doing a great job.
Are they what yours, are, are there areas in particular that you want to see more, less, protocol, you know?
So.
Feedback. Can we give Nina feedback?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll speak for myself first. Um, again, I think that the feedback that you're giving us is certainly helpful. Um, I think that, and Dan, who crosses this line every now and then as well, having the feedback on site planning stuff is, is helpful sometimes. Long as you don't, long as you don't get too far out into the weeds.
As an architect, it's hard not.
I, I, I know exactly, and I knew why you asked. I knew, that's why you asked the question. Um, so again, I think that the, the depth that you've gone into for some of these, you know, some of the applications that we've had thus far has been perfect. Um, you know, I, I always would, Dan and I would always butt heads about. You would, you would get too far into the weeds on some of the site planning aspects and I'm like, not really what you're doing. But again, it's, it's, it's helpful to have additional opinion from, from others.
And my, my feeling has been to ask questions as a, you know, to kickstart a discussion.
As, as a design, as an architectural consultant should.
Okay. So if it's, if presented as questions is helpful, then that's good.
And I like getting more ahead of time too, that's really helpful. Kind of gets me back in traffic without doing.
Yeah. A lot of times we would get our permits from day of the night of. We'd want to have a jersey the night of. Thank you.
Well, yeah, same thing, you know, that thing you put out, it kind of gave me a, a different outlook. You know, you may, you may have an opinion or bring something up that I might have missed or not considered. So I think it's very good.
And I certainly don't need people to agree with me either.
No, I think it's great and, you know, architect and again, we're all in different backgrounds and stuff and, you know, Angie said that, you know, we all bring out, sometimes we bring out different things that some of us didn't see or totally missed, so, yeah, it's great.
I agree. I'm agreeing.
Sure.
Agreed.
All right, good. Um, so with that, entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.